Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So visit us online at gogreenharbor.com. Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers so much for a fun-filled, yet affordable, family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with ramp and dock, free rowboats and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool and kiddie pool. You'll enjoy our attractive waterfront and beachside accommodations. So visit us online at gogreenharbor.com.
Very sensitive nature. I'm very appreciative that it's very delicate. Thank you. This is the old angle, not mine.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to acknowledge this evening that Falmouth had an unfortunate, tragic accident this past Sunday off of our shores in North Falmouth. And we lost the life of a summer resident. And we hope that you will keep him and his family in your prayers. Thank you. First up tonight is signed treasurer's notes. Susan Ripley?
Pass this out first. What this represents tonight is we're rolling over a million thirty thousand. A million is the comprehensive wastewater management plan that we actually borrowed on in 2011. And thirty thousand for the windmill two piece that had been borrowed originally back in 2009. And this was the last piece of it. So what's happening now is it's maturing here on the 27th of July, and we're rolling it again for another year. You also see we had five bids with Century Bank coming in as the low bidder for us. We did receive a premium, which we'll use to pay down some of the issuance costs. And what I'm asking now is before we sign all of the documents, just the vote from the Board of Selectmen, voting to approve the sale to Century Bank. And then again, you'll see behind here are ratings from S&amp;P. What we do usually every time we go out to do a borrowing, we'll go to S&amp;P and actually have an interview with them. And our town manager, our assistant town manager, and many of the department heads that are tied in with the financial area will participate in that actual interview. And you'll see again, we had the best rate for our short term, which is a SP1 plus. And we're holding stable with our long-term rating right now, which is a AA plus. Of course, we're looking for AAA, and we'll keep pushing for that as we move ahead. Are there any questions?
Just one question, if I may ask, Susan. Is there a reason we're only doing this for a year? Is this...
We still have some more expenses that haven't on the million dollars. We've spent about seven hundred... or excuse me, we haven't... we've spent about three hundred thousand, so we want to wait till all the expenses are in before we roll it into long-term.
Okay.
The million five that we had taken care of here probably about six months ago, we had spent about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We already rolled that into long-term. So that's what we're looking at. And we'll probably have other borrowing going on, so we'll roll this into long-term next year.
Great. Any other questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the sale of one million thirty thousand dollars at .7% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated July 27, 2012, payable July 26, 2013 to Century Subsidiary Investments, Inc., at par and accrued interest plus a premium of three thousand ninety dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion of second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye's have it. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know that the open meeting law allows items that aren't on the agenda if they're unknown or an emergency... of unknown or an emergency nature, whatever. Starting at the end of the week, two weeks ago, to the middle of last week, the water in this town stunk reminiscent of the boil water order in 2012. I have friends, acquaintances, family members who were sick with the same symptoms, as well as animals. During the week, I saw a lot... a number of fire hydrants being flushed. And we're not famous for flushing our fire hydrants. So I would request, if someone could check, I would like to be assured that we weren't put in the same position we were put in two years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Federin. And Mr. Suso is going to address something of that nature in his town manager's report this evening.
Takes me longer to write my name.
Thank you, Susan. While we wait, we're going to have a little bit abbreviated agenda tonight because we do have a cancellation on one of our items. So the scheduled wetlands hearing is at 7:10. So I'll begin under the summary of actions. First, approve a license, a grant of the license for Falmouth Youth Hockey for a sign located at the corner of Thomas B. Landers Road and Technology Park Drive. That's number one. Number two, approve request for a one-day liquor license, Seacoast Shores Association. I'll hold that. Number three, approve request for a special event, Fair Winds Rehabilitation Clubhouse. Seed to Shining Sea Charity Walk, Shining Sea Bike Way on 9/29/12. Approve request for a special event, East Falmouth Village Association, Menard Beach Fundraiser on August the 4th. Number five, approve request for a special event, Stuff a Helmet Football Fundraiser, Falmouth Park Warner on 9/112. Number six, approve...
I have a question on, I guess, on number five.
Okay, you want to hold that then?
Yeah, there are two different dates that were given.
All right. Number six, approve town manager attendance at the ICMA Annual Conference. That's on 10/5 to 10/12. And then number seven, appoint Julian Suso as the alternate town of Falmouth representative to the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. So if I can have a motion on one, three, four, six, and seven?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on those motions, on those issues? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Close? Aye's have it. We'll go back to this after we hear our first wetlands hearing. First wetlands hearing, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-70 Wetlands Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on July the 22nd at 7:10 p.m., Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on the application of Ronald and Janice McHugh for the construction of a fixed pier that will extend approximately 93 feet beyond mean high water into Perch Pond located at 52 Mattapan Street, T-Ticket, Mass. Area affected in Perch Pond... area affected is Perch Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing in the Selectmen's office. For the applicant, Mr. Boiselli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Michael Boiselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, Ron and Janice McHugh. The McHughes are here tonight, and I represent them. They're requesting a special permit to construct a residential dock at this property. They recently acquired the property and intend to make it their year on home their avenues and have retained us to assist them in the permitting process. We have initiated that process. We submitted an application to the Falmouth Conservation Commission and received an order of conditions granting approval in accordance with their rules and regulations to construct this dock. And we're here tonight asking for similar permission under the town of Falmouth zoning bylaw. The proposed dock is a timber structure, four-foot-wide fixed structure that starts on the upland, just north of the existing house. It crosses a coastal bank as an elevated walkway, including some steps that transition the walkway down to a lower level once we make way over the coastal bank. But the walkway remains elevated to provide sufficient lateral access beneath it that would be five feet above mean high water in accordance with requirements of Massachusetts DEP. It continues at that level for one short distance, and then it transitions down again. It'll slightly lower and get closer to the water surface, and terminates with an L. The pier is supported by pilings. It's traditional construction that has been before this board before, including installation of pilings that are averaging 18 feet on center. If you look at this profile in your packet on the second sheet, you can see the stairs that transition down over the coastal bank until we get to this level. The terminal end where the boat will tie has an L. And the use of a small recreational craft that they would like to tie here, you see to it to grant the special permit. We submitted a narrative with our application. You should have the order of conditions in your file. All of the conditions are typical and standard. We received the letter from the Harbor Master. We met the requirements of shellfish survey and providing mitigation for having the dock in an area that crosses shellfish. I'd like to point that out. There is a band of shellfish in the near shore, and we're bridging the shellfish and putting the location where the boat ties well in excess of required setback. It's interesting to note, just in this particular application, it's unique to me, at least in this town. I'm typically presenting plans to you where the water depth at the end is three to four feet. And in this application, if you look at the water depths, they're in excess of 10 feet. So at least where the dock is, the area is significantly deeper than I'm used to seeing in the waters of Falmouth. With that, I'll... if you have to answer any questions.
Any questions, Doug?
I have a few. One is, both in this picture and in one way or the handout, I don't get a feel, and I'm sure the Conservation Commission has dealt with this, as to how far... how much of Perch Pond is it going out to? For instance, could you at least give me some idea of where is the other shore opposite that dock?
I'd be happy to.
An even approximate, just to...
Yeah. The... from shoreline to shoreline directly across is between 500 and 600 feet from low tide to low tide. So we're crossing just slightly over 20% out.
Okay. The other question... the other questions I had, one is, most of the yard footage or size of this were just under the limits of allowable. One of them was, you know, two square feet below or something. And I'm just concerned with making sure it actually stays there and what sort of safety concerns we have in the future to make sure, I guess, there was also a requirement that there not be a cleat on the inland side of the dock.
Yes.
Certainly when it's done and a month afterwards, there won't be one. I certainly hope we're going to have assurances that, and that's not going to change.
Yes. I think you're referring to the concern that there may be more than one boat tied at this structure, and the Conservation Commission has a similar concern. The shape of the dock is an L, which could lend itself to having more than one boat. It is... it's an L for another reason altogether. We're required to provide 25 feet separation from a property line extension. And if we propose this to be a T, which is more common, and discover there's more than one boat to be tied, then we violate that setback. You may want... you may ask yourself, well, why don't we just shift it this way? Well, shifting it this way, we start to get too close to the shellfish. So... You're right about a couple of the regulations. There's a maximum length of 100 feet. We're at 95. That was not because of water depth, which is more typical, is to provide enough separation from the shellfish. And we're also at... the Conservation has a regulation that says that the T or L at the end must be no larger than 100 square feet, and we're at, I think, 96. So I guess to answer your question, there's a special condition within the order of conditions with the cleat references and limiting to one boat, but it comes down to enforcement. The owner is very much aware that it would be a violation to have more than one boat. He likes the idea of having flexibility to tie on either side depending on wind conditions. Sure. But I've been told in no uncertain terms, there's no plan to have more than one boat at all.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
My question was answered, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Pat?
A couple. Just to reference the questions that Doug just asked, it is also in the deed that there can only be one... it will be recorded in the deed that there can only be one boat at the dock. A question I had related to shellfish was, there... the survey states that there is a shellfish bed, as you pointed out. Is it expected that when construction is underway, that you will have to relocate those shellfish? Do you expect them to be there at that time?
There's no plan to relay the shellfish.
Relay them?
If you look at the... closely at the plan, the actual animals that we encountered during the survey are shown. It's a random measurement. There's no... there's no telling if there may have been other shellfish in other locations, but statistically the density is such that in this near shore area, it exceeds the densities. What we've done, if you look closely at the plan, is designed it so that the pilings are being installed such that they span that area. So there's no driving of pilings into that actual significant density area. There's two on the near shore that are just up from it and where there really isn't any water. And then the next two are spanning by design 20 feet. We've increased the span so that we couldn't get the bridge down. So we did that so that we would avoid the shellfish, and we would not have to do any relay of any of the animals during construction.
Okay, I have another question.
Sure.
In the Conservation, in the Natural Resource Director's report, he refers to observe incidents of propeller dredging at the mouth of Perch Pond, and that that has been observed in the last few years. He says... and so I guess my question is, is that accidental, propeller dredging? Or is it boat owners on purpose attempting to improve the opening, if you will, at Perch Pond? Do you have any idea?
Well, I don't have any idea, but if... I don't know if you're familiar with the... this area, but you have Great Pond, and then Perch Pond is an upper section, and there's a very narrow channel in between. In fact, this Board of Selectmen several years ago permitted dredging in this area, part of which was to open this narrow channel. I've never... I do not believe that there's any purposeful dredging by propeller. And all of the boats, I've actually represented, I think, eight or nine applicants in here for new docks. And all of the typical boats that you see in here are 20 to 23-foot, maybe up to 27-foot, 28-foot outboard or inboard-outboard type boats that the propellers can be raised. So if there's any propeller wash happening, it's... I would be amazed if it were to do any prop dredging. But at low tide, and I've been there at low tide, there's adequate depth, but you have to go easy for a distance of probably 100 feet. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, to a degree, yes. I guess I think that there isn't any plan to dredge the mouth of Perch Pond that's on the books at the present time.
There isn't any plan.
So it'd have to be carefully observed by the DNR.
Yes. I do know, if I could... sorry to interrupt. Know that there's some neighborhood interest in revisiting that. There's been some talk.
And if I might add, in the Harbor Masters report, he does make note that it is not on the town's plan to dredge that. The homeowners themselves would need to do that in their own interest and at their own expense if, in fact, they wanted to do that.
At obtaining their own permits.
Right, owner permits, which is key with that as well.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
Any other questions?
I just have one comment that...
Yep.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that just about every engine that you'll find on a boat, any gasoline or diesel-powered engine, is going to be... is going to be what's called raw water cooled. So what it does is it sucks in the water from the ocean or the pond or whatnot, and then runs it through the system and spits it out. And I don't know of any responsible boat owner who would attempt to dredge a channel with their own prop because they would end up sucking the silt into the engine, which you can imagine the consequences of that, so...
Okay. I have a motion. I have the most recent plan date is March the 20th, 2000... pardon me, 4/23/2012. Is that true?
Yes.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve the plan dated March 20/2012 with the amendment date of April 23, 2012.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Aye's have it.
Thank you.
Is it all right if I sign this plan here? We will go back to the summary of actions because our next time thing is at 7:40. That would be, pardon me, 7:25. We'll get right to that, I guess, at this point. The next is a wetlands hearing. Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetlands zoning bylaw of the town of Falmouth on July the 23rd at 7:25 p.m., Selectmen's Meeting Room, Town Hall, on the application of Toby Lane Associates Association, Inc., for permission to repair and improve a pier that extends approximately 83 feet beyond the mean high water into Eel Pond and located at Parcel 3A, Knockabout Trail, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is East Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the file at the hearing at the Selectmen's Meeting Office. I have a letter from Falmouth Engineering and Mr. Boiselli. Due to unresolved matters in this issue, the applicant wishes to request the continuance for the public hearing scheduled for tonight to August the 6th, 2012. So therefore, we open the hearing, and we will, if I can get a motion to continue to August the 6th.
Do we have a time?
A time.
Do you have a time certain? Do you have the calendar? I'll give you a chance.
I will be late to that meeting.
Okay, so it's... you would want to get as many people as possible, and then... because it... we need four boats, right?
I will not be here until 8 o'clock that night.
Pardon me?
I will not be here until 8 o'clock on that night.
8 o'clock, okay.
The hearing at 7.
That's it? It's already on?
7:50.
It's already on at 7?
Oh, yeah, it is.
It's already on at 7, so maybe we should move it...
So we'll move that to 8 o'clock. Is that all right? So we'll move that to 8 o'clock. Is that all right? I think you would want the full complement of the board, so...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this hearing to August 6, 2012, at 8 p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Aye's have it. Thank you. We'll go back to the summary of actions, if that's all right with the board. First one held is approved request for one-day liquor license, Seacoast Shores Association, August 2, 3, 4, 9, 10, 11. August 2, 3, 4, 9, 10, 11, 16, 17, 18, 23, 24, 25, 30th, and 31st, and September 1st, 2nd, 3rd. I wanted to make a disclosure, and let them hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Do I have a motion on this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Eyes have it. Next up is a approved request for a special event, stuff a helmet fundraiser, Falmouth Pop Warner, on 9/1/2012. Doug, you wanted to hold this?
My only question is that we received, there are two permits that are in our packet. Maybe it's just an old one from November 2011. I'm just curious as to, is that just to give us the conditions?
I think that was, in fact, what it was, what, how we approved it last year under those conditions.
Great, thank you.
So would you like to make a motion under the same conditions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the event on Saturday, September 1st, 2012, the rain date, Saturday. Actually, there was a question in the handout as to, about September 1st being Labor Day, the Labor Day weekend, and whether, the recommendation, I thought actually from the police chief, was wondering about whether that was the best time to have it. And so I did want to raise that issue also. We'll be quite busy that weekend.
And don't the Marines do a boot thing? They're not doing it this year?
Well, we haven't seen any application to that as of yet. I do know that Pop Warner has been struggling financially. And last year, this was the only fundraiser that actually kept the Pop Warner program Whether or not it was on the same weekend last year or not, I don't know.
According to the file, it was in November.
November, right.
26th last week here.
Sure they want to capitalize on as many folks in town as possible, so it's at the pleasure of the board.
I would, I would prefer to go with the suggestion of the police chief, and he's suggesting we go on a different weekend, and they have suggested the rain date of September 8th. I would prefer to go along with the September 8th date instead of September 1st, in deference to our police chief.
Perhaps we could continue it for a week, and ask the police chief to come in, and we could discuss his concerns.
Well, they're outlined in his rather extensive letter, so it's at the intersection where Stop and Shop is. It was a busy intersection, and he's laid out some pretty.
As he did last year.
Yeah. Someone was, is anyone here?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have a question. Mr. Jones made the motion. Was there a second?
No, there was not.
I'll second the motion, and I can agree with Mr. Jones that I, they've already requested a rain date of, of September 8th, so I see no objection. I see no problem with that, and that the chief did, he did suggest that the applicant, and I quote, "that the applicant choose another weekend, and September 1 would be Labor Day, and traffic at that intersection will be heavier than usual."
Okay. Would you maybe, would you amend that motion to give them another rain date off of the 8th?
Well, if we assume a week later, then, that the rain date would be the 15th?
I'm happy with that amendment.
So, the motion is that we would allow the Pop Warner stuff a, stuff a helmet on September the 8th with a rain date of September the 15th?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Eyes have it. Okay. Next one up is approved request for a special, we got that one, and that is all of the summary of actions. Next item up is at 7:40, so I would ask that we go to the town manager's report next.
I'm here.
I, I know, sir, but it's not 7:40 yet. We'll go to the town manager's report until 7:40, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of items. As the board's aware, you had a presentation at your last meeting on the draft comprehensive wastewater management plan, and we have, had, we had received some draft suggested amended language, and also some additional staff language in the narrative. To the board, I have received some, some comments back, and, and would welcome comments from other members of the board. I had provided a follow-up copy of that. In addition, any other comments that board members may have, we'd be happy to compile and assemble, as I think the board had asked a week ago. And just as a reminder, at this point, it is anticipated that the board would have a vote to consider authorizing the filing of this plan as early as a week from this evening. So, just a reminder on that. Also, this past Thursday, I attended the summer meeting of the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association, which was held at the Seacrest Hotel in Falmouth. It was a very well-attended and productive meeting. Wednesday evening of this past week, we were pleased to join in hosting Mr. Sam Gaston, who's the city manager of Mountain Brook, Alabama, and his wife, at a dinner just prior to the MMMA summer meeting. Mr. Gaston is the current president of ICMA, again from Alabama, and I know that he and his wife enjoyed their all-too-brief stay here in the Town of Falmouth. Also, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, the Charter Review Committee is holding a meeting this Wednesday, July 25th, at 4:30 PM. They had invited those members of the board of selectmen who might be available to join them in a discussion regarding where, you know, their questions on a few remaining issues. And just as a matter of caution, in talking with Chairman Murphy, we did post Wednesday, July 25th at 4:30 as a selectman's meeting in the event that we have a quorum of the board that would be possibly in attendance. Obviously, that's fully within the determination of each member of the board. So that's done as a precautionary measure.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a question on that?
Yes.
Just to clarify that we would be, as individuals attending this meeting, expressing any views we had, not representing the board at that point, but as individual selectmen, is that correct?
That's correct.
Or individual town meeting members or residents of the town?
Right, but because there may be, in fact, more than two members of the board of selectmen there, we'd be posting that as a meeting.
I understand that. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that's the same day and time that the Charter Review Committee asks the selectmen to attend their meeting to clarify some of the issues about the section of the charter, C-512, and, I think it's C-511 and C-512, related to the hiring of the town manager. Did you get, you didn't get that email?
Yes, we did, but that's exactly what he's talking about, Pat.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the wastewater management.
No, we're just posting this particular, that meeting for the Charter Review Committee as a selectman's meeting, so if we happen to have more than two representatives there. Thank you.
I apologize if I misspoke. Yeah, it is a Charter Review meeting, and for those members of the board that can attend, and I'm planning to attend as well. Also, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I wanted to advise that we received a report of a fish kill on Little Pond, on private property on Little Pond, at some point on Friday and over the weekend. It, it was brought to the town's attention, and we did investigate, and the, want to report that the Massachusetts Department of Marine Fisheries is investigating per standard procedure on their part, if there are any questions that do arise. Also, Mr. Chairman, earlier today, I'd received an inquiry, newspaper inquiry, regarding a water department issue, and the gentleman, a few minutes ago, also raised a question about wa, water, potential water issue, and I want to take this moment to correct some inaccurate and misleading information that unfortunately appears to be out there. First of all, one of the things that was suggested was that there was a water quality problem at Long Pond, that is absolutely not the case. First, by way of background, I just want to affirm, this town and other municipalities that operate water systems have to file on a weekly basis with the Department of Environmental Protection, a multitude of individual water samples that are taken at different locations within the system. We do that as a matter of routine, and it's done every week. Occasionally, a sampling error can occur. Everybody is aware, of course, that a couple of years ago, unfortunately, there was a problem with, that resulted in a boil water order, but I want to affirm that this absolutely did not occur at the end of this past week. What we found out that did occur was a sampling error. And just to give a little further background, at the end of last week, we received a report from a laboratory at which we routinely file samples, that two different samples were identified as having a potential problem. Again, as per standard procedure with the Department of Environmental Protection, a second mandatory automatic sampling was done on the following day. There's a 24-hour turnaround, and in an abundance of caution, and I applaud this, our, you know, new water superintendent, Mary Beth Weiser, working with Public Works Director Ray Jack, delivered water samples to two separate individual testing laboratories on the follow-up sample to give us absolute certainty on the situation. And I'm pleased to report that when those samples came back, it affirmed that the system was functioning properly, there was absolutely no contamination problem whatsoever. So clearly, what we experienced was what we could call a sampling error, which does, I want to emphasize, given that we have variables involved, that does occur from time to time. That is the reason that the DEP has the regulations in place that they do, that they have to absolutely ensure that the second test is done, and that, again, in an abundance of caution, we were not required to use a second dual laboratory, but we did that. Again, we want to reassure the public that there was not a problem, and I'm delighted to reassure the public and the board that indeed there was not. But there was clearly a documented sampling error, which did occur. And I also want to affirm that our multitude of weekly tests continue as per standard operating procedure, and I appreciate very much the vigilance and oversight that our new water superintendent, working closely with our Public Works Director, ensured to make, make certain that we can reassure the public, as we do with the routine testing, that all is well in the town's water system, and that vigilance and monitoring will continue going forward. And that's a brief report on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
When are we going to ask questions? Can I ask questions now, or you want me to wait till the end of the evening?
Oh, you're more than welcome to ask a question. This is not up for public, this is not on the agenda. You can ask a question in regard to his report, that's sure.
That's what I'm trying to ask. So, we could go Sunday, the sample that came back positive Tuesday, was actually, was never a positive test, is what we're saying, it was just, then the test taken Tuesday, which came back supposedly positive Thursday, that never happened, is what we're saying. Or? The, the first report that I received was Thursday evening. I received a call, this is, this past Thursday, from the water, our water superintendent, and later that same evening, I spoke with Ray Jack, and confirmed that there was a question about contamination on two samples. That being the case, it's, it's immediately reported to DEP, of course. The next day, the mandatory follow-up samples were taken, that would be on this past Friday. There's a 24-hour period given once the samples are turned in, which they were late Friday afternoon, to, as I mentioned, two separate testing laboratories in this case. And we did not have the confirmed clean, clean bill of health back until late on Saturday, 24 hours later. So that is the process. Two samples, I was notified late on Thursday, we retested on Friday, and got a clean bill of health on both samples, confirming that what occurred on, and reported on Thursday was a sampling error. Okay, my just concern is it was never a problem with any, we never had any contamination whatsoever, is what I'm asking. Or is it the first two, there could have been an issue, and if there was a third test, we would have had to have a mandatory boil water? I guess what I'm asking, because I've received many calls at my home now, asking about this rumor that's out there, that there may have been two bad tests, and if one came back Saturday morning as being the third, it would have been a mandatory boil water. I want to make it perfectly clear to the public, you're saying it was an error. Yes, it was, it was a sampling error by virtue of DEP protocol. You have to have two straight samples that both show a level of contamination. That did not occur in this case, and the presumption by the DEP is that the first one was a sampling error. And the reason they require two is that these can occur with some frequency, because we have human beings involved, and they, they require the two samples as a, really as a check and balance, to make certain that we're not releasing information that is erroneous and turns out to be false, as this would have been, and could alarm the public inappropriately. So thankfully, in following the protocol, we were able to confirm and report to DEP by two separate testing labs, that our, our water quality is, continues to be positive and, and within appropriate limits and clean.
I just want to clarify something. I think there may be some confusion, that the tests that are done, there are a variety, there are a number of samples, and I don't know, perhaps Mr. Suso knows the exact number, but.
It's 84 a month, Doc.
Eighty-four a month, so, but in any given day, I guess there's a certain number of samples that are taken, and apparently, two of those samples came back positive, but it was from that day, on that day, and then they would retest those samples as per the protocol, as noted, and when those retests came back, that they were negative. And it's not that there were consecutive samples that were positive, it was just two from the same day that were positive, but the subsequent tests came back negative.
That's absolutely correct.
I think it's also important to note that the laboratory that we typically use had a substitute performing the test on the given day in that laboratory. There was some vacation time, so the specific person who normally does the testing was not available, and it was done by a substitute in that laboratory. And that is why we wanted to make sure that we had two laboratories to analyze the data the following time. Okay? Not taking any public comment on this, because this is not on the agenda. I addressed it, and he's addressing it this evening. It's all right with the board of selectmen, but if you'd like this to be on an agenda item, that would be fine, but it'll be going outside of the scope of the public meeting law. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions up here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else in your report?
No, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The next item up will be committee interviews, vote and appoint. We have a Board of Assessors, Energy Committee, Human Services, Substance Abuse Commission, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Town Building Committee. First up this evening would be Lori Ann Robideau. This is for an appointment to the Board of Assessors. Yes, if you'll come to. Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the Board of Assessors.
I'm Lori Ann Robideau. I'm a member, citizen of Falmouth since 78, and I'm here because Ms. Pat Flynn flagged me down 20-something years ago.
Something like that.
A long time ago.
Yes, Lori was on the Board of Assessors many years ago.
For nine. I was the first group to move with the Charter Review after three consecutive. Take a little break. Now you have an opening, and back. Any questions?
So you know how it functions?
I do.
I know you and Pat have a real, we got to tell the rest of the board why you want to do this.
Oh, I've been doing this, real estate paralegal, since a long time, and I've always worked in real estate, and worked with Navy's office for nine years, and then I continue now working, buying and selling, on the legal side of it, though, not with my own money.
I'll open it up to questions from the board. Doug?
Nope, no questions. Thank you.
I have none, Mr. Chairman. I'm very familiar with the candidate.
You? Are you sure?
Yes.
Just want to thank you for the resume. Always appreciate the additional information, and it looks like the candidate has an understanding of the role and, and an understanding of the responsibilities, so.
Pat?
Well, yes, and she also has certification from the Board of Assessors, the state.
Yes, and I understand that does not get renewed.
Once you have it, you have it.
That's it for life.
Yeah. So that's a real plus, I think. And our, they, our department head, David Bailey is here, he might want to say something.
This is for a term.
This is for a term to expire on 6/30/15, and we have one opening. Do I have a motion from the board, or put her name and denomination, and to...
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Loriann Robideau to a term expiring 6/30/15.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for coming back, Lori.
Next up is Robert Bodiger.
Betcher.
Betcher. And this is for an appointment to the Energy Committee.
This is a one-page.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Betcher. I've been a resident in Falmouth since June 1st, 2006. I've, I'm retired. I worked for the General Electric Company for 43 years in the power generation business, and I've done everything in that field, from machining them, to fabricating them, to installing them, to starting them up, of turbine generators. I, I'm interested in serving on the, on the Energy Committee, because I feel like, with my background, I can be an asset, both to the community and to the, to the committee. And the, the energy is moving forward at a very rapid pace. There's new technologies, and there's environmental concerns. And I feel that the town of Falmouth has showed due diligence in the past, and I'd like to be a part of that due diligence in the future. I guess that's it.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions. Pat, you want to start?
Do you have any experience with solar energy?
No.
No. I only ask that because I read in the paper the other day that Falmouth is second only to Boston in terms of the number of solar energy projects in the state, which is, and our Energy Committee is certainly very much behind that, so...
No, I, I understand that, and that's why I say the technologies are growing fast and furious, so...
I guess I have a question about, when you were working with GE, did, what protocols did they have, say, for the company, or for product development, when technology would change, even during the years that you were there? Did they have protocols of how to continue to educate the employees and bring those changes in, in terms of selling them to the public?
Yes, they did. They had a, a training facility in Schenectady, New York, and it was state-of-the-art, and they would, every year, a field engineer, or salespeople, or anyone in that, in that business would attend some kind of a course there. So, yes, they were always updating us and making sure that we had the latest technology.
Okay, Brett?
I must say, first of all, thank you for the additional information. You've got a phenomenal background in, in energy generation, so you certainly bring a lot of practical experience to the committee. You understand that this is an advisory committee?
Understood.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Understood.
David?
I see you have background in turbine
Yes.
...generators.
Steam engine.
Manufacture, installation, and repairs. I just watched a show two nights ago, from Meredith, New York, on Catskills, about turbines, and something they went through a couple of years ago, which turned out to be a disaster, but have you been keeping up on ours, what we're doing with ours, and...
Only through the newspaper, and both the Cape Cod Times and the Enterprise. And I know there's a his, there's a history that goes so far back. It's, it's kind of tough to know it all.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, where do you, where would you say you fell on the continuum of, let's use the old kind of energy production, or let's go to the newest, most up-to-date, high-tech thing we can go to? Where would you fall on?
Yeah. It's, one of the, one of the things that I feel is very, very important, that our government has not come forward with a good energy policy. In this state, back to the 60s, and the 70s, and the 80s, right up to today. And so, for the, the town of Falmouth has been left, hung out to dry, because they tried to move forward, and maybe they didn't have the latest information, or they didn't have the best set of guidelines to move forward in. So, kind of to answer your question, I would probably approach the new technology very cautiously. But I've, I, in my career, I saw the technology improve from kind of links and levers to a little, all you needed to do to make an adjustment was have a little pocket screwdriver. So, I guess I would say I would, I would be very conservative.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I'd like to say that on every committee, balance is important, and I think that you will bring some balance to the Energy Committee.
Thank you, sir.
Check some balances, so... Old school is not always bad school.
No, it's not.
It really is not, so sometimes we have to be able to remember where we came from before we can move forward. So, we do have, on this committee, we have a term expiring on 6/30/14. What's the board's pleasure?
It's an unexpired term?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Robert Betcher to the Energy Committee for the unexpired term that ends 6/30/14.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second.
One other question I do have, just because this has happened in the past. Do we have deadlines on these applications that we are aware of when we ask people to apply by?
These are revolving applications on all of these committees, so when we get applicants in, some of these committees might have been advertised for six months.
Great, thank you.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You'll see the town clerk, and he'll swing you in at some point. Okay, thank you. Next up is Paul Azato, for the Human Services Committee.
It's Randy, Randy Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, it was, I did it wrong.
And I have a quick question.
Yes.
I input two committees down, substance abuse and human services. So, at this time, I'm only going to be able to do substance abuse.
Um...
Both over records and on the list.
Yeah.
Both on our list.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Both are on the agenda, so...
If I can go now, even though...
You sure can.
Hi.
Hi.
So that's the one you want to...
Substance, unfortunately, not my favorite.
Unopposed.
This is just a four-page.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Randy Azato. I'm a tenured, full-time resident of East Falmouth. My full-time job, I'm a 26-year law enforcement veteran. For the past seven years, I'm one of the security directors for the Massachusetts prisons. In my spare time, which is somewhat limited, I teach college in Boston, and I also consult for several police agencies, Los Angeles and Houston Police. Basically, I'd like to be on the Substance Abuse Committee. In my profession, I'm realizing more and more the importance of preventing drug abuse at early ages. I know the committee does a lot with juveniles in Falmouth, so that's one of the reasons. Also, I have three daughters currently in the schools, three different schools, so it's a very important thing for me, the Substance Abuse Committee. Human services, too, just to mention. I just had a change in my schedule in teaching, so I would love to do human services also, but I can't do Wednesdays for probably the next year. I'm doing some teaching at Harvard, and also Bay State College in the Back Bay. And the other reason for substance abuse is, because I work for the prisons, our population's supposed to double, unfortunately, in the next 10 years in Massachusetts. So, a lot of that's precipitated by the substance abuse in all the communities.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to questions. Brett, I'll go to you first instead.
No questions, but thank you for the additional information. Very impressive. Thank you.
David?
I'm actually still reading this. I'm very impressed by your background. I don't know when you're going to have the time to even do this, but...
No, Thursdays are good. Wednesdays, fortunately, I...
I actually have, I don't have any questions for you.
My only comments, I feel the town's quite fortunate to have some of your background to be able to support our efforts in the substance abuse, and so I applaud your applying for this.
Thank you.
Pat?
I would agree with all the comments, yes, that your background is exceptional, and certainly, I think, very valuable for the Substance Abuse Commission.
Randy, we're really going to put you, is Randy all right to the card?
Yes.
We're really going to put you to work, because there are quite a few openings on this committee, and we might need you to also help us recruit some additional
I can do that.
...for this committee. I, with the number of openings, I'm not quite sure they're going to be able to fill the quorum, but we surely can work towards that. I appreciate, again, the applying for this. We need folks who are knowledgeable, caring, and considerate, because, especially for our youth in our community, we need to give them an opportunity to succeed, not to fail. So...
I'd like to nominate Randy Azato to the Substance Abuse Committee, term ending 6/30/15.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is William Peck. This is for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. There is one position, and the term's expiring on 6/30/15. It's an unexpired term. Good evening, Mr. Peck.
Thank you. I don't have any additional paperwork.
You don't need it.
I used to be on the Substance Abuse Commission.
Okay. Do you want to introduce yourself a little bit, and tell the board why you want to be on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee?
Bill Peck, lifelong resident, Falmouth. I just want to be on the Subs, Solid Waste Advisory Council, just because it's something that is going to cost us a lot of money, I think, in the very near future, to get rid of our trash and recyclables. So we have to be creative in how we deal with that. And I just think that I can offer some help to the committee to move forward in the right direction.
Okay. David Brager, I'll open it up to you first.
Do you have any opinions now on, yet, as a, on pay-as-you-throw?
Personally, I don't like it. I, I think the cost is too high, but if that's one way of dealing with covering the costs that we're going to incur, rather than raising the tax rate to cover those expenses. But there may be other ways of doing it. I just feel like there's some other ways of doing it, and we have to kind of think outside the box a little bit.
Thank you.
Doug?
I guess a pull-up is that, I'm not sure, understand, we haven't, you know, there's been no price put on pay-as-you-throw. It could be 10 cents a bag, and so I'm not sure when you say it's...
Well, right now, it's 2 or 2.50 a bag, correct? No?
2 would, 2 would be the maximum.
But that's, that's on the present bag at the dump. That's not
That's correct.
...anything to do with the pay-as-you-throw?
Well, I, I feel that that's kind of leading into what could happen curbside.
I see.
And I just, I just, you can put an awful lot of bags in a dirty dumpster, and that fire exceeds the cost to get rid of that load that's in the dumpster. That's my feeling on that.
I see. Okay.
Okay.
Pat?
Billy, would you agree that maybe you could have an open mind regarding that during the discussions?
Yes, I do.
That you're not absolutely
No.
...firm on your opinion about it?
No, no, no. That's why I said that there may be other ways of doing it. Maybe we could have our own dumpsters and find out the actual cost to get that dumpster unloaded, whether we take it to the transfer station, or we take it directly to CMAS, like some other towns do, or whatever, okay? But I tell you, I just think, you know, maybe we should have our own roll-offs, our own truck, and, you know, maybe 10 or 12 roll-offs, and we could do our own recycling with those, and only take it to the recycling plant when it's full, rather than paying the transportation for a half-full dumpster.
So, really, at the end of the day, it's the cost of whatever
Yeah, it's great. That's, that's what I'm after. I'm, I'm after looking at why it's going to cost so much to get rid of this stuff, okay? Where it's going to, the solid waste is going to CMAS, and it's being burnt and sold as electricity. It doesn't need to be that high, the cost.
Haven't you been attending a number of the solid waste meetings?
I have, I have.
For quite some time.
Since, since my last application, Ms. Brazier has asked me if I would like to attend and offer information. So, I just saw in the paper that there was the opening again, and maybe that's why I was a little brief in my application, just because I thought it might be on file, and some of the information that I put on the first time might be looked at again, so I didn't know.
Brett?
No questions, but I do recall the prior interview, and I'm glad to see that Mr. Peck has come back and re-applied, so...
Just a reminder, Mr. Putnam reminds most folks, you realize these are only advisory committees, and that they, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee
Yes, we advise to you.
...make any decisions?
That's correct.
I mean...
Yep, I don't have a problem with that.
I want to make sure that folks out there realize that no decisions have been made by the Board of Selectmen on anything as we move forward.
No, and that, and I, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move William Peck to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, term ending 6/30/15.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Nice to have you. Welcome, Mr. Peck.
Thank you.
Next up is Barry Norris.
Gosh.
Barry is an applicant for the Town Building Committee. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself, so...
Yes, I graduated from MIT in 1951 with a degree in building engineering and construction, and I worked in the building construction industry until I retired at the end of 1998. I've lived in Falmouth for 25 years. During that time, I was a project manager, primarily project executive, building buildings. The largest project I ever worked on was the $72 million legislative office building garage capital remodeling in Hartford. I probably managed a couple hundred million dollars' worth of construction during my time. During that time, I specialized in management, value engineering, and those are the main, the main two things, and scheduling. I had my own business for about 10 years at the end of my career, when I did mostly scheduling as a consultant. I'm an original member of the Town Building Committee, and I was just term-limited off last year. While on the committee, I was on the subcommittee that managed the fire rescue headquarters construction, the library addition construction, and the first renovation at the poorhouse. And I want to be on the committee because I like construction, and I think, I think I can offer something.
Okay. Let me open it up to questions. Doug?
I guess, I have two things. One, again, a comment similar to what we had with Mr. Azato. I think it's amazing when we get people who are so perfect for our committees coming forward and wishing to work and work again. Just on a note on what we have for committee vacancies, and maybe someone explain that Mr. Norris is listed in the reached term limit with a date 6/30/14, and has that just meant that the last time, when he reached it last year, and his replacement was appointed till 6/30/14, or is there a time in which he has to wait until he can be reappointed?
You do have to take a year off when, when we... When will you?
Yeah, I've been off for a year, yes.
You have been off for years. So.
I'm sure Mr. Sussell's office checked that before they sent me the letter.
Okay. Because Heather knows.
But the two terms we have available, one's, I guess, in our notes, one's listed as being, the term expires until 6/30/12. Well, that's not a very good term to appoint him to. And the other one expires 6/30/14. I just want to make sure we know what term we can appoint him to.
Well, the term expired 6/30/12 would actually have a three-year term, so it would be 6/30/15.
Okay.
That's right. Yeah.
So that term would be 6/30/15.
Fifteen.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, Doug? David?
No, just thank you very much for your application and what you've done in the past on the library and the fire department, sir. I can imagine after 48 years of 47, you've seen a lot of changes in construction.
That's for sure. Thank you.
Brett?
No questions. Thank you.
Pat?
No, I'm very familiar with Mr. Norris's work on the Building Committee, so I would move to appoint Mr. Norris to the Building Committee for a term, to a term expiring 6/30/15.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Patience. Okay, next up is to appoint Board of Selectmen members to the LIP Subcommittee. The LIP Subcommittee, for those who don't know, is for Friendly 40B. We have a Subcommittee. I, in my previous career as a Selectman, served on that board, and we typically meet with the affordable housing folks, the planning department, the assistant town manager, and the applicant. And there are some guidelines that we look to get additional, under a Friendly 40B, we look to get additional affordable housing versus the straight 40B housing, which would be 25%. So there is another multiple guidelines for the LIP application. But the Board of Selectmen have two representatives that typically meet with the applicants and talk to them about the project, and then it does, in fact, go through the regular channels and would be approved as a LIP application. So I'd be happy to serve on that because I do have some knowledge of it from the past. I do know that we need another member of the board, or if you don't want me, that's also well and good as well. The reason for this is because we have not had any applications for this in quite some time, and I believe there's a potential applicant coming forward, so they wanted to make sure the committee was reformulated. So do we have any additional?
Just, I do have a question somewhat related to this about the timetable we're going to have for trying to figure out liaison to other committees, just because that could be related to which committees we might be suggesting we're going to be a part of.
To be very candid with you, I am trying to piece together the liaison committee, who had what and who is what, because there was a draft policy that we didn't bump people off, but I have a grid at home that has three years with people who are serving multiple committees, but other people, so we will come up with that as.
I can imagine it's a puzzle.
It's like deciphering the entire grid. Please, please bear with me.
It's no problem. I imagine it's a very complicated puzzle to work out.
There were committees that I didn't know I was assigned to as well, and I'm sure there's committees that other folks didn't know they were assigned to. So this does meet, it is not a scheduled meeting. We try to work on people's schedule to do this. So Brian Curry usually is the lead on this, and we set up an appointment, whatever is feasible. A lot of times, it had been in the day. It could, we do have professional staff, so typically it is in the daytime here and there.
Mr. Chairman, just, I know some members of the board worked around when this originally came up, and at the time, I declined, and I will continue to decline to serve, only because I have relatives who are in the construction industry and who do affordable housing projects, and I don't want any appearance or even actual conflicts of interest, so I'll respectfully decline.
Okay. Is there anyone else that's interested?
I, I'm the liaison, and I've been attending some of the meetings at Affordable Housing. If there's no one else interested, I'll.
Well, there's two folks, so I'd be happy to serve. Didn't sound like anyone else was jumping to it.
I'm kind of stretched out.
Not a problem, I understand. So, Doug?
I just think it makes sense if David is on the Affordable Housing Commission to be.
So maybe I'll look for a motion from somebody for David, and.
I would move that David Brager and Kevin Murchin be our two representatives on the LIP Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, aye. Okay, next up is the approved minutes of the meeting of July the 16th, 2012.
Mr. Chairman, could I mention one item, if I may?
Yes, sir.
On the comments regarding Town Managers Report, just a clarification on number two, that's page six. I had, I did raise the issue of attending the annual meeting, but it was, I was notifying the board that in the subsequent week, which of course was tonight, I would formally be requesting your approval for the ICMA annual meeting rather than Municipal Managers Association.
So it's the ICMA?
Yes, ICMA, and of course, the board has acted on that this evening. I just wanted to alert you that I was going to bring that up a week in advance.
Are you able to? Okay.
Yeah, I have one on page two, where it says the board's discussion raised these points, comments, the third paragraph down. The second bullet states the issue of public need and whether or not the businesses demonstrates it. I think it's more like it's the issue of demonstrated public need. So it's not the businesses that have to demonstrate it, it's the testimony, it's the people who have to demonstrate it. So if it reads, "The issue of demonstrated public need," demonstrated being an adjective. Okay? That's my only.
So with those two corrections, do I have a motion to approve with those two corrections?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the minutes of July 16th, 2012, with the changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, aye, aye. Next up is minutes of July the 16th. This is executive session minutes, and this would be to approve and not release.
I move approval of the minutes of executive session for July 16th and not to release.
Second.
You're all set. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, aye. Aye, aye. Okay, and that concludes our business for the evening. I would pass all around the issues that we had approved, and does anyone have any additional Selectmen reports that they'd like to talk about this past week?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
More of a comment. I know, was it last week or the week before, we entered into a three-year agreement with the EDIC regarding our landfill, and it happened to be on Mass DEP, and, you know, they're having a workshop in a couple of days, but it has to do with putting solar panels on cap landfills. It was always a concern that the solar panel installation would do something to the cap, the liner, but they've improved the installation so much, so I'm hoping that's something that maybe the EDIC has been keeping track of. I mean, I'm not sure what else would go on a cap landfill other than solar without really disturbing, but that's just very interesting. It's coming up this week, but you had to pre-register, but just a thought I wanted to bring up.
No problem. I know that they're looking at any and all things from every perspective, and they plan on inviting any committees in that have some ideas of what to do with that as well. So I'll pass that information on. Anybody else? Do I have a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.